To be involved, to be engaged, to know what's going on around us. And so for everybody to do that, and then those of us that are elected officials, you tell us what your opinion is. There's a whole bunch of county commissioners here tonight. There's also commissioner candidates here tonight. It's your responsibility to tell them what you think. So that's the main thing. Tonight, we're going to have a chance to hear from Elachua County Growth Management, from a chance to hear from the Stand By Our Plan group, the I Support Plum Creek group, and then we're going to see an overview of the plan itself. After that, we're going to have a chance for questions and answers. I hope everybody gets, I guess, their thoughts straight and goes ahead and starts thinking about what kind of questions you have, rumors or anything. Everything's fair game to ask, okay? But what I ask of everybody is regardless if you agree or disagree with whoever's presenting at the time, please respect their time. One, that gives them a chance to speak and to be heard because somebody else may not know what they're saying and may have not heard that part before, all right? So it gives everybody a chance to speak, and that's the great part of our democracy is everybody has a chance to speak and be heard. Plus, that allows more time at the end for everybody to be able to ask questions and answers. The more time we take up during the in-between time, then the less time we're going to have at the end for questions and answers. So I'm not going to hold you up anymore, but I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. And I'm going to turn this over to our longtime city resident who's been involved in our community. Actually, he was my basketball coach when I was growing up. But he's Reverend here, Pastor Eugene Herring of New Hope Methodist Church over here in Hawthorne.
Thank you, Mayor Surtsey. I'd like to say good evening to everyone. And we're going to open up this evening session with a moment of prayer, which will be followed by our pledge, "Leach to the light." Dear Father, we thank you for this opportunity as we come tonight to take care of the business of our community. We pray that what we will do tonight will be in the spirit of brotherhood and for the good of all. We pray, Father, that we will have order in this place tonight, O God, that we will just do what is pleasing in your eyesight. And we thank you for each one that's come out tonight, Lord God, because we realize that some of us have differences of beliefs and opinions, but we're all here because we have one common goal in mind: we want the betterment of our community. And for this, we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. So I would just like to take just a few moments to go over how our order of business will be conducted tonight. At this time, we would just like to say that each of our speakers will be given approximately about 15 minutes to address the group with their presentations. And we have allotted a total of just a little over two hours for the entire meeting tonight. So it's going to be very important that we just stay right on time and right on the clock with the meeting. The purpose of today's meeting will be to provide information and allow the audience to ask questions of the presenters. We are not seeking public comments, but comments can be provided on the card. There will be some comment cards, so if anyone has a specific comment, you can ask. We write their comments down, but questions will be allowed with answers by the presenters tonight. And we ask kindly also that you please hold your questions until after all the presentations have been conducted. There will be a specific point in the program where we open the floor for questions. When that time comes, we're going to have a couple of microphones placed. We're going to have one place here and one place in the aisle, the second aisle over here. So we kindly ask once again that you just refrain from interruptions and asking questions while the presenters are bringing forth their presentations. Regarding the questions we're going to ask, that when you do come to the microphone, we ask that you ask your question singularly and speak clearly to the microphone, present your questions to the presenters. They will be standing up here right at the front, so they'll be available to answer our questions. Also, we're going to, we've got a nice crowd out tonight, so there may be a lot of folks that want to have questions, and we may not be able to accommodate everyone, but we're going to do the best we can. So it's real important that we respect each other and try and keep our questions brief and to the point and get succinct answers. Also, we're providing microphones, so there will be no need for anyone to shout. And if I sound loud, I'm going to preach it to the folks. So we were asking kindly, what we ask for tonight is respect for each other. So there's no need to raise our voices and shout and people listening or anything like that. Also, it is absolutely acceptable to disagree with another person's opinion because that's part of the reason why we're here tonight, there are differences of opinion. But what we do ask and we do demand tonight is that we do respect one another and that we treat each other with respect for tonight. If there is a question that the groups are unable to answer here tonight, if anyone has a specific question that the presenters are not able to answer, we're going to ask also that you write that on the card, and those questions will be, information will be taken, or emails, some sort of contact information will be taken where you can and will receive a response to those questions. So with that said, we have our rules in order tonight. Is everybody on board with that? So now, at this time, I'd like to introduce you to our speakers for the evening. Can our speakers please stand with me while I give an introduction to speakers, or speakers here tonight? Okay. Representing Elachua County Growth Management, we have Missy Daniels. Missy will be providing an overview of how the sector plan application process works on the county level. Representing the group of Plum Creek will be Justin Williams. And Justin is also head of the Envision Elachua Task Force. Representing the group Stand By Our Plan will be Commissioner Mike Byer. And representing the Plum Creek and Envision Elachua will be Rhodes Thaler. So thank you for your attention, and at this time, we are going to kick things into high gear. And the first speaker we're going to have to present to us is Missy Daniels as our first presenter. Let's give her a hand.
Good evening. I guess I don't need to introduce myself again. I will tell you, I'm used to presenting to the county commission at a podium with my cheat sheets right there, but I don't have that tonight, so bear with me. And if I don't hold this in the right location, let me know. I'm too loud or too quiet. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Sector plans. Sector plans are provided for in state statutes. I will say I get the pleasure of presenting the boring technical part. You may have questions, you may want to write them down. I'll try not to linger too long on the statute part, but just to let you know what a sector plan is. Sector plans are intended to promote long-term planning for conservation, development, and agriculture on a large-scale landscape basis, meaning properties, property owners or groups of owners with at least 15,000 acres can come in and apply for a sector plan to a county. They're to emphasize urban form and protection of regionally significant resources and public facilities. And as I go through the presentation, I'll explain kind of these overarching concepts of sector plans. And the sector plan requirements blend local comprehensive plan amendment and development of regional impact issues and progress, which then I'll also explain what that means as we go through. Sector plans are on two levels. The first level is the adoption of a long-term master plan, which is an amendment to the county comprehensive plan. The county has comprehensive plan. In the 1980s, the Florida legislature mandated that Cleveland County start doing comprehensive planning and create comprehensive plans. There to be generally some changes changed lately, but generally evaluated every seven years and updated if needed every 10 years. The last time Elachua County updated their plan as an overall update was in 2011, I believe is the last adoption. Since then and before then... Now, again, we'll take you, but I don't have a cheat sheet. I don't think that fits. Okay, where was that? Okay, the last time we updated an overall update was 2011. Since that time and before that time in between updates, we have private amendments. People come in that want to change the land use on their property or the tax, the policies of the comprehensive plan. Always on a smaller scale, we've never had a sector plan. In fact, this is the first, pretty sector plan that's beginning after the 2011 statute. Elachua County would be the first one. There are others in the state that they were under different requirements. The second part of the sector plan is the adoption of detailed specific area plans, at least two, at least 1,000 acres each. So you think of it as the long-term master plan is for the entire, for Envision Elachua, 60, about 60,000 acres. So you get a plan that's kind of a broad plan, like our comprehensive plan is for the county for the entire 60,000 acres. If that gets adopted, then they would submit detailed specific area plans for sections of that 60,000 acres to give it more details how that was developed. The long-term master plan and the detailed specific area plans may be based upon a planning period generally longer than a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is a 20-year plan. Like I said, we updated about 10 years, so it pushes it out another 10 years. But it's a 20-year plan. Envision Elachua plan for the sector plan is supposed to be a 50-year plan. State statute allows that. They also have to specify the projected population in the planning area in Elachua County, and they can include, allocate a portion of Elachua County's growth over the next six years to the Plum Creek property. They have not done that so far in their application, and we are still getting more information. I don't think they're going to, they don't have to. They're also not required to demonstrate need. Historically, comprehensive plan amendments have had to demonstrate need. If you're going to add, say, residential land, you have to show that there's a need in the county or city or wherever for that residential land, that your population grows as such, you need to change and add additional commercial or residential. That's changed a little for all comprehensive plan amendments in general. It's not as much of a requirement anymore, but for sector plans, the statute says explicitly it's not a requirement. They don't have to show that the county's going to increase by the number of residences that they want to put out there. Requirements in 163 generally for comprehensive plans have to be met, and I'm not going to go into all of those, but they kind of are the same as the sector plan requirements. And certainly, if you have questions, write them down, I'll answer them afterwards. So sector plans, the first comprehensive plan amendment, remember I said they're a blend of comprehensive planning and developments of regional impact? Developments of regional impact are a term for developments that have regional impact. And Elachua County has over 1,000 residences or over, I think it's like 400,000 square feet of commercial, and there's some other thresholds for different types of development. If you're proposing a development like that, you have to do special things and get state reviews. So sector plans take that detailed, the development of regional impact and comprehensive planning and kind of combine them, the state statute, combine them so they don't have to follow two separate processes, but they kind of have their own special process. So the specific requirements for sector plans in section 163, 32.5 of the Florida statutes lists what in addition to general comprehensive planning requirements, sector plans have to do. They have to give us a framework map. I'm sure that if I'll be often involved with this process, you've seen the map, and they have them in the back of the room showing me how the different land uses, conservation, urban, mixed use, I think it's their urban agriculture, rural, they have all the land uses on the map. They have to look at water supply needs and resources. How much water is this development going to need if you're available water? They have to look at transportation facilities and other public facilities and what kind of impact they'd have on them, or if they're going to need to build new ones. When those would need to be built and how. Natural resources, they have to look at regional natural resources. They have to propose policies that would create an urban form in their development, which means a compact development with a kind of a mix of uses, so everything's close together, so you can have the compact development and then preserve everything around it. And they also have to show permanent preservation of sensitive lands, and they have to talk about how they're going to do intergovernmental coordination. For example, we're out here in Hawthorne, because this development is proposed right next door to Hawthorne, it's a huge development, it's going to have impact outside of Elachua County, so they've got to have some provision for that intergovernmental coordination between Hawthorne and Cuyahoga, Marion County, Clutton County adjoining government. So the long, the comprehensive plan amendment part of the sector plan, the long-term master plan, follows the state coordinator review process, and that means there are two stages. There's a transmittal stage and an adoption stage. Once Plum Creek, we're expecting some more information to come in this week from Plum Creek, and we'll finalize our review. And at the end of my presentation, I'll talk a little bit about the timelines and where we are in the actual application. But once we've gotten a staff report and are ready to go to public hearing, first we would go to the planning commission acting as the local planning agency for a public hearing. They make a recommendation to the county commission. County commission would have a transmittal public hearing. Not in one night, I'm sure. After, if the county commission decides to transmit the proposed plan, it would go to the State Department of Economic Opportunities, that's the EEO, Department of Economic Opportunity, and other state agencies like Fish and Wildlife, Department of Transportation, Department of Ads. There's a whole list of state agencies that would also review it, and they give us comments back for counties. And so county staff would take those comments and then prepare another staff report to go to the second stage, which would be the adoption stage. We don't go back to the planning commission or the local planning agency at that stage. We just go back to the county commission for an adoption hearing. The detailed specific area plan process. That's not the process we're in right now. I just want to go ahead and lay it all out for you. If the conference, if the sector plan is adopted, the long-term master plan is adopted, Plum Creek would submit detailed specific area plans. They are to implement the long-term master plan, so whatever's adopted in that long-term master plan, as long as the detailed specific area plan is consistent, it probably gets adopted. With the local government development order, the county unified land development code requires them to do that as a plan development, because that's a form of zoning we have, so that we can have a development order with specifically how they'll develop, and that really goes more to our process. That plan development would go back to the planning commission and the county commission for adoption, but there's no transmittal. It's just one hearing with the planning commission, one hearing with the county commission. Once adopted, once the county has adopted the detailed specific area plans, and they don't have to do the entire 60,000 acres when they come in, they can do one at a time or two at a time, they just have to do at least two over the entire 60,000 acres. And if that's adopted, the county cannot downzone that property for a specified period except under certain circumstances, like they're not developing in the state or the plan was adopted in reliance of something that was retrieved. Same factors for anything the county commission adopts, a comprehensive plan or a zoning. And I said it already, it requires a minimum of two public hearings, one with the planning commission and one with the county commission. The detailed specific area plan requires the same information as the long-term master plan, just in more detail. So you have a detailed identification and analysis of maximum and minimum densities and intensities and the location of the future land uses, the water supply, transportation, same list, just more detail, so you know exactly how it's going to develop. So this is probably what you want to know. We had a scoping meeting in September of last year for this with the Regional Planning Council. They're the ones who organized it. Florida DOC, Fish and Wildlife, Department of Economic Opportunity, the public, different counties around came, and that scoping meeting was the beginning of the process. Once Plum Creek let us know they wanted to do the sector plan, we had this scoping meeting to kind of talk about what issues needed to be addressed and to make sure we had a complete list of everything we thought they needed to be addressing when they came in with their application. So they took the notes from those meetings and came in December with their application. We commented, we reviewed the application and staff, and staff was not just growth management, but public work, Department of Environmental Protection, and growth management are probably the big reviewers for these types of developments for any comprehensive amendment, like that fire rescue, and basically all the county departments are looking at this. So we reviewed it, and we commented on things that we thought that they had not answered correctly or that we needed more information on, we couldn't really review it because we, there just wasn't enough here. So they resubmitted some information in March, and again, there were some things that are going to be addressed now, like the entire 60,000 acres or the 12,000 acres that's proposed for development, for example. All the development could have been spread out over that, and that's a lot of acres. It's not 60,000, it was just the 12, but still it's hard to say what was going where and what impact that might have. So we've asked them some more defined, how much development could go into each section of that and where they really thought they would develop, and we're expecting to get that with the next transmittal tomorrow. I'm not sure if they're going to talk about that tonight or not. So that was probably the biggest thing we said in our second letter, and we do expect to receive that tomorrow. Once we receive that, it's going to be about six to eight weeks before we get the staff report finalized, get the review finalized, get the staff report written, and get it out to the public. In the meantime, on July 8, we will be taking this presentation and with a little bit more in it to the county commission to talk about how we're going to handle this. Once the staff report is ready, whether we'll go, we need to talk about ideas for venues, county commission chambers is not that big, for workshops or state's public hearings, we're not sure yet. And we want to talk about specific topics that we might break those hearings into so that you don't try to cover it all in one night, which we all know couldn't happen. Maybe a general overview night or two, have environmental issues, transportation, economic, fiscal impacts, the Cuyahoga plans, follow-up to any questions that came out of the first few, kind of break it down, something like that. And we're going to have that discussion at the county commission meeting during the day council on January 8. And that discussion will probably tell us how we're going. So if you're interested in that, you can watch that, you can come in and see it, but you can watch that on your computer or on the TV and see. We still won't have dates, but you can see if we get our information from Plum Creek tomorrow, six to eight weeks of two months from now. If the staff report's finished, we certainly have to give, if we go straight to the planning commission hearings, we have to give them time to digest the staff report, at least bigger than any they've ever had. So it's probably early fall, late summer, early fall is when we'll start having these meetings, but hopefully we'll know more on July 8. Here's our website, if anyone wants, I can send a copy of this PowerPoint to you if you ask, I've got it here, and I'll, the questions will get to it.
Okay, thank you, Missy. At this time, we will have Justin Williams come forth with his presentation.
I have no PowerPoint. I'm wishing now that I had, because now you will all be looking at me instead of the screen. So I want to point out quickly that I'm wearing my wife's glasses because I dropped mine in the toilet at work today and stowed hers out of her purse before I came here tonight. So if she's not here, I appreciate if no one called my wife and let me know that I have her glasses. Thank you. My name is Justin Williams, I'm here tonight to support of Plum Creek. I'm not going to give you any great detail that you're not already going to ask these others who are here tonight. I do not have as great a detail as Missy Daniels does, she does a wonderful job explaining herself very well. I'm also not as elegant a speaker as she is, so I hope that she'll take and be patient with me as I may be just a little bit anxious here tonight. And I do tend to chew my words a little. My English teacher told me that for 12 years. Stop chewing your words, Justin. So I'll try to not chew my words tonight. This process started for me three years ago with a phone call, and I got the phone call from Plum Creek's recreational land manager, wanted to know if they could possibly meet me. And the purpose for that was, we currently, we mean the club that I currently manage, have been leasing a large portion of this property since 1971. So the phone call came, and I was on the board, and the recreational organizer said, hey, I'd like for you to meet, maybe a couple of you and your board could meet some folks from Plum Creek and discuss the future plans of some of their property, or what they had hoped. So I said, sure, absolutely, and we got together, and three of us met with three folks from Plum Creek. First time I'd met with several of these folks, and had a wonderful candid conversation. And obviously, as you can imagine, from me being the one who had sat on the property, and I'm 43, so I was born in 1971. The gentleman who chartered the club is here tonight and can tell you that I was there alone with a lot of them when I was just in diapers and able to stand in the seat and ride along with him. And so the land is very important to me. I need you to really understand that it played a tremendous role in my life. It still does, as I'm a member of that, of that club still at hand, and the current president of that club. My children of the fourth generation of my family to have the opportunity to be on those lands and experience everything that we've been so greatly blessed to be around. So you can imagine my response when I knew that we were going to go into a process such as this, and it was many sleepless nights. And I thought, wait, you know what I'll do? So I was asked to participate on the task force, and I reluctantly agreed. And myself and another board member at the time decided we'd take it on together in tandem. And we went to the first meeting not knowing what to expect, and a year later, we were still very skeptical of the process. And we decided to go in there with our eyes wide open, but also being very conscientious of the plan and participating along with educating ourselves on just exactly what was going to take place on the property. One of that, one of those, going forth and reading the North Central Florida Strategic Policy Plan. Now, that's a real snoozer, I wouldn't suggest anyone read that, but becoming a little bit more familiar with that, understanding that there was not a lot listed in that plan for this side of the county. Then going into the process of learning the sector plan, downloading the information like probably many of you out here have done, and reading and educating myself on the sector plan process. And then trying to understand and doing a fairly good job, I want to believe, on the comprehensive land use plan in Elachua County, which is a huge document in itself and policy. Not a subject matter expert in any of the three, just someone who had taken the time to educate himself the best that he can and the limited resources that he had at hand, capability also. But coming a year later and then still not being so sure where we were, and realizing that, man, I don't know, you know, meeting with, meeting with my club members and us discussing what our future was going to look like on these lands, and wondering what would be the future of our hope in recreational hunting on the property, and then coming to the realization, well, you know what, we're going to stick this thing out for another year, we're going to see where it goes. And then getting the vision document back, and it was very important for us that the things that we were specific in pointing out, which was that hunting remained as part of the conservation on that property, and that we developed in a sense where we can conserve as much of that property as possible while doing so within the vision plan. So we were, we were now beginning to gain a footing of understanding and trust that, hey, the things that we had brought up for hours in meetings till 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night were in the plan. Now, I got to tell you, that's big to sit on a board with a bunch of folks as diverse as what I am. I'm the redneck from the woods, okay? Sitting on a board with folks from the University of Florida, the task force and others from these tremendous organizations of trust and leadership and education in our community, and hunting is part now of the conservation of this property. Big to me. That told me that folks were listening to exactly what our concern was. And therefore, we want to be sure to preserve and conserve as much of that land as possible. And therefore, we want to be sure to preserve and conserve as much of that land as possible. And that was there. So we go into year two, and now we're getting our foothold, we're gaining a little bit more ground, we're becoming a little bit more bold in asking for everything that we can ask for in this plan, which is preserving the quality of life that I've come to grow and enjoy in my small community that I live in, and how important that was to me, but soon realizing and remembering that the Georgia Pacific Plant closed how many years ago, and 550 jobs were lost, and Hawthorne nearly became a ghost now. And it's still not so far from that now. And realizing that the family-centered culture that I grew up in, that was so important to my family and our way of life, was slowly unraveling at the seams. And then looking at my children who are 14 and 11 now, wondering, are they going to have an opportunity to remain here, and have a good quality of job, and provide a life to their families, to where possibly they can remain here? Because since my grandmother passed away, my cousins are no longer here because there was no opportunity for them. They're everywhere, they're scattered across the United States. And we see each other now at funerals. That's as often as we see one another. And that's when, that's when it dawned on me, that the plan to me was about preserving the quality of life, providing an opportunity for the next generation, not mine. This is not going to happen in my generation of time, but maybe my children. If not their children, their children, my children, but their children. And possibly because of that, we can remain to contain one important plan, and that was to remain a family-centered culture. Third year, that's where we are now. And now, you know, the rubber meets the road, you know, we're getting to the long stretch. This is where the, hey, this is great that we're having this tonight, it's great that everyone's here to hear both sides, because it's important that everyone is informed, but it's also important that you're informed with the truth, that you're informed with what is real and what is not a myth, that you understand the fact, read the vision document if you want to. Heck, I think my home number may be in there, if it's not, please don't call me. But, if, if, most of you, I think a lot of you know, even some of you in the green shirt, I've known for a while, and I'm hoping that when we leave here, we can still be good friends, because that's still my intention, is that we do still remain friends. But I would ask you to please review the documents, please be sure that you understand, don't take a word of someone else, don't take my word, read the vision document, build your own knowledge from your own research. That's when you find the truth. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to have Commissioner Mike Barnaby come forth. Give him that.
That's definitely not my presentation. Thank you for having me here, thank you for coming tonight to learn more about this plan for yourself. Thank you to Mayor Searcy for setting this up. Sort of feel like I'm at a football game, I see two kind of colors of jersey out there. I know most people have, many of you have already made up your minds about things, some of you are here to learn tonight. I don't know how many minds are going to change tonight, but I hope that at a minimum, everyone leaves with a little bit of understanding of what we're discussing. For better or worse, this is a community transforming proposal, and we all need to understand what those transformations are going to be about. Let me just quickly say, while we're trying to bring, I only have a few slides, and they're maps. I'm a map guy, I think a good map is worth a million dollars. Do we have the original thumb driver with the map on it? What's going to come up here soon, hopefully, is a map of Alachua County, and it's got a couple of things on it. It shows where all the municipalities are with their boundaries, it shows where all the wetlands and the wetland bucklers are, superimposed on that map, and it shows the lands that are within the theme of 100-year floodplain area, unless we probably know what that's about. I think if you really want to understand why this is such a transformative issue, and why so many people are concerned about it, you really need to understand the land, the nature of the land, where Plum Creek's land is, and what it's like. And it would take me many words to explain it, so I'm really hoping that map's going to come up in a minute. Okay, you're welcome. Now, I just want to take a look at that one minute. The blue is the wetland and wetland bucklers, and the kind of, I don't have very good color vision, the kind of greenish stuff up there is the theme 100-year floodplain. You can see the municipal boundaries, it's not as crisp as I would like it to be unfortunately, but I hope you can see in the back, what we're looking at is this broad swath, swath of blue, all across this part of the county. The municipal boundaries and the white areas, the upper, drier, higher, and they're all in this kind of triangle going out this way to the west. There's a reason for that, I'm not a geologist, but you're from Hawthorne, so many of you have probably heard of the Hawthorne Formation. It's a layer of clay that underlaid the ground all along roughly the eastern third of the county. Thick clay underneath the ground, what it needs is that waterfalls stay on the surface, it doesn't soak in. This area out here to the west is all sand and lime rock, rain falls there, more or less, it strikes directly into the ground. Water that's here, it cools up, it has nowhere to go. If you were to get on a plane right now and fly across Alachua County during the day last time, look down, coming over this land right here, you'd see constant, just large areas where there was nothing but the reflection of the sun. Just much water, standing on the ground for months at a time, and it happens every single year. These are wet, flat woods, the water either cools up in areas, or in a few small places, runs off into the land. Now, the reason it's this important is because a lot of people have been curious as to why all the growth is happening out west, and some people believe there's even been a conspiracy of government to keep all the development out there, they wonder why the government hasn't done anything to recreate on the west, on the east, what has happened in the west, even though I don't think everyone necessarily wants to do that, some may. This is the reason. This is the environmental reality. This land is wet. It is wet, it's extremely remote. Plum Creek bought 60, 65,000 acres, no houses on it, it's hard to do that anywhere in Alachua County, only just areas where you can do something like that. The comprehensive plan did not create this reality, it does acknowledge it. It acknowledges that the area for growth and development has always been much easier or environmentally beneficial, less damaging, in this area, and the population's going to continue to be out here. To make this area suitable for that kind of growth, you're going to have to do a lot of old-school Florida dredging and draining, you're going to have to replon. The water really has nowhere to go, it's going to stay on the surface, creating that area where we can develop, that's what it's going to have to be like. Now, I want you to look at a couple of things here, we'll go over to the next slide. See that area up there, I don't have a pointer, you see this, all this wet area, then this one particularly wet area up there, with the green kind of right up there, just to the west of all that, you kind of see that, it's like that. Here's Plum Creek's land, all of them has taken the exact same map, this comes from the water manager district by west, where the data comes from, it's the data that they're required to use as part of law. And this superimposes Plum Creek's lands on the same map. Plum Creek's lands are the darkest, outland in dark, but it has the wetlands over. So the first thing you notice, it's really wet, there is water all over this land, everywhere you go. It's particularly wet up there, see that section up there that I was pointing out to you, it's almost entirely blue. This area over here, they have 65,000 acres, largest landowner in the county, in the state, I think in the country, Rose can confirm that, if she wants to. And, but that 60,000 acres, maybe 5,000, is part of a development in the northern part of Beaneville. This area down here, about a third of it is permanently conserved, it's not part of what we're discussing tonight. The part that we're really talking about, or this area here, can you see that point? That area and this area are really the parts that are, and some of this are the parts that are in active place. Comprehensive plan allows, this is all rural ag, Plum Creek has no commercial rights, that means they are entitled to one home for five acres. 60,000 acres, minus this, they sold all the development rights to, the previous owners sold all the development rights to all this, so they don't get to use that. So we're left with about 37,000 acres, about 7,400 homes, theoretically, they could build on the remainder of their land. Now you can see, even if there were no comprehensive plan, it's going to be extremely difficult to develop this area, practically, environmentally. What Plum Creek is asked to do, they've asked for an additional roughly 3,000 homes, they've also asked for a lot of commercial development rights. They have none now, they want 15.5 million square feet. The Oak Smalls about a million square feet, just trying to give you a sense of scale, that's about 15 Oak Smalls worth of commercial development. And they want all these rights transferred into this area here, remember, they have no rights down here, they want to take the rights, the theoretical rights from these areas, and transfer them into here. So it's going to be concentrated here. In order to do that, they're going to have to change some things about the comprehensive plan. First of all, obviously, the land use is going to change radically, this is not rural ag anymore, it's urban, urban industrial, commercial. And they're also going to have to really change the existing wetland objectives, because county standards don't allow the destruction of wetlands, except under extreme circumstances. All wetlands are required to be protected, that's not going to happen here, they're going to have to replon this, they're going to have to destroy some of the wetlands, they're going to have to replon and reorganize in order to do that. So those are the major changes that they're requesting. Now, very quickly, I'm getting tired. We were described every night, and I'm speaking now about standing by our plan, the organization is the opposition, we don't think of ourselves that way, we're not opposed to Plum Creek. We support the county's comprehensive plan, we think it's a better plan, a better vision for the development of the community than what Plum Creek is offering. Plum Creek is asking questions, and they're giving a very good answer, we think, to the wrong question. They ask, "What is the best way to build a city on our land in the eastern part of the county?" The comprehensive plan's about a broader perspective than that, it includes the input of the entire county, and looked at the entire county, and asked the appropriate question, "Where should we be building cities?" Where do we want to encourage growth and development that's in the interest of the entire community? That's the appropriate question, we think, it's the broader perspective, it's the more representative question. So we support the county's comprehensive plan, we're not against Plum Creek, we welcome them as corporate managers, but we ask them to abide by the same plan, and the same standards that everyone else has to adhere to, including all the other developers. And the minutes that I have left, I want to address a couple of the issues that have come up a lot, and again, I'm an environmentalist, I'm very active in the environmental community, a lot of people have been attracted to the idea of Plum Creek's promise to set aside 87% of their land in conservation. Get that ready to die, that's an impressive promise. Couple of problems with that. If they develop under the comprehensive plan, that's about what they're going to have to conserve anyway, but under a different set of guidelines, and I'll quickly skip through why that is. First of all, almost 40% of their land, remember, is already conserved, you can skip over that. But 40% of it, 38% to be precise, is, cannot be developed and have no development rights. A foot remains, a third to a half are wetlands, most of which, well, none of which legally can be developed right now, but most of which would be practically economically to develop even if there were no comprehensive plan. So you're down to about a third of their land that they could theoretically develop. The county has a policy in place in the comprehensive plan, it's called strategic ecosystems. Do I point it, you to make this thing work? There we go. And I want to skip past this quickly, I don't have time for that. Strategic ecosystems, basically, looks at the entire county and maps those areas that have the greatest environmental significance, or the regional wildlife core, or if they have significant environmental features. This map zooms in on Plum Creek part of that, the shaded, the shaded areas, that's strategic Virtually all of their land is county-designated strategic ecosystem. That means that half, up to half, has to be set aside and protected, the most environmentally significant half. So if you look at the two comparisons, they're going to be required to set aside the same amount of land, it's just going to be in different places. I want to point out one thing very quickly, see this part down here? The part around Hawthorne, the part that most of you are probably most interested in? That has a strategic ecosystem, it's one of the first things you notice. It's also right outside of the limits of Hawthorne. At this point, neither I, nor the group stand by our plan opposes that. There's an impression that we're against all of this, it's not the case. The part where Plum Creek is promising to create jobs, right here, all this area here, we think it ought to be developed and annexed into the city of Hawthorne. It's appropriate. It's all this area out here, the wet, flat woods, where Plum Creek is only promising to build more of what we have all over the county, standard residential, we have 50 years, I'm estimating, 50 years' worth of approved growth in the unincorporated urban cluster of Alachua County alone. There is not the demand for new housing that's not already met. We have plenty of standard commercial, industrial, there's a lot of industrial in in this county, somebody wants to come here and create jobs, and they can do it anytime. And my judgment, the only thing unique about this, the only thing unique Plum Creek has to offer, is that this piece here is large, it's under contiguous ownership. So if there was a really big commercial development, somebody wanted to build an automobile manufacturing plant, for instance, they need a couple of square miles to do that, maybe, up to. And that's the only thing in Alachua County that's like that we're talking about in the place. So again, we don't oppose that part, we want to move the discussion to the rest of it. Now, I'll close out with this. The folks from Plum Creek, they're nice people, I've met with them four or five times, I have personally, have come to see us all, nice people, very sincere, they don't make the decisions. The CEO of Plum Creek, who will, he's a man to top, he's going to make the decisions, gave this interview, a month or two ago, in Atlanta, with Stocking on this, where he was very clear, very blunt, about what the company's intentions are. And I'll read that. One of the key initiatives, and this is, again, speaking, and down here is where you can go look that up, if you want to read the entire interview. "One of the key initiatives the company would pass up here is the entitlement of our most valuable development properties. Through the pursuit of these entitlements, we change the very nature of these assets and create long-term value for shareholders. We do not intend to pursue vertical development," that means construction, "or invest a significant amount of capital into these properties. Rather, our strategy is to spend time and effort to move these properties up the value chain through entitlement, zoning and land use granted, capture that value, sell it You may want to say that, what's happening in Alachua County right now, it's the top of their list, best thing that we'll hold here. And I showed this to you, this is the main reason, not so much a gotcha, even though I think this is a smoking gun, this really shows what Plum Creek's intentions are, is that they don't build anything, they will acknowledge that, Plum Creek does not create jobs, they do not build houses, okay, they mainly grow trees, and they sell off some of their land, which is really valuable, by getting upzoning and then selling it. Someone else will eventually, if the new jobs, create jobs. Plum Creek cannot make any promises, I'm being honest with you, so I'll close it out. At any time in the future, it only takes three votes of the Alachua County Commission to change anything this commission agrees to. The future people who own this land, who will develop it, will have every right to come back to the county commission anytime and ask for changes. And 10 years from now, who's going to remember this? We're essentially signing a blank check, because once this initial approval is given, the first legislative action the county commission's going to take next year, there's no turning back. We're not allowed to take that back. We invested them with rights, they will carve it up, they will sell it off, others will do things, but they're not doing anything that isn't already happening in Alachua County, it's just a matter of where it's going to happen. I'm going to close out with that, I'd like to go on for a lot longer, you've been very patient, I appreciate your attention, if any questions, I'll get to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we're going to have Rose Siker come forward.
Thank you. First of all, appreciate everybody being here. It's a wonderful thing. How many first timers do we have? We have a few. All right. Well, good. I have a clicker challenge, if you'd like. Here we go. All right. So what we want to talk about really, not so much the comp plan versus Plum Creek's vision of Alachua Plan, the community shape plan, but really want to talk about, do we want to accommodate some land in the future in order to be able to house some employment centers and then take advantage of an opportunity to set aside some significant land in conservation at no taxpayer expense? If we say yes, then you're going to believe this is a great opportunity. The opportunity is good for the citizens' future. We need to address the east and the west disparity. 23,000 acres of new conservation land is a good consideration. If you say no, you don't believe the opportunity exists. You like the 1% annual growth rate that we currently have right now in the county. You don't want to attract any new jobs or new people. And if new employers come, it really won't impact the poverty rate disparity. So that's really the big policy question that we're talking about this evening. So to give you all this little update, Plum Creek is one of the largest landowners in the United States. We started from Burlington Railroad. So years ago, when the government wanted us to connect from the Mississippi out to the West Coast, they didn't have funds in order to be able to pay the railroad companies. So they paid the railroad companies the land. And in about the mid-'80s, Burlington Railroad said, we don't want to be in the landholding business anymore. They spun us out from that, and we became Plum Creek. And most of our land were up in the Pacific Northwest. And then over the years, we bought some land, obviously, up in the Midwest and up in the New England area. And then back in 2001, we bought Georgia Pacific Land Holdings called The Timber Company. So we are publicly traded. We are a real estate investment trust. And I'm not a finance person, but what a real estate investment trust is, it allows folks that if you don't have an enormous amount of money to get into big real estate investments, that you can do it through the real estate investment trust. We do grow timber. That's what we do. We manage our land by growing timber. We also manage it for some of its mineral rights, the natural resources, some of the states, it's water rights, some of it is not water rights. We do buy and sell land on a regular basis. Not always are we selling the land that's most valuable. Sometimes we're selling the land because we have a track of land that's a little difficult for us to manage with forestry. It's a little far away. It's hard for us to keep up with it. So that's some of that's it. We also perform sustainable forestry initiatives, so that is obviously something that we're trying to ensure that forestry continues in the future. We protect the land, the waters, the bugs, the bunnies, that sort of thing. It's very serious. We get audited. And it's a third-party certification. Folks will show up unannounced, check our paperwork to make sure that we're doing what we said we're doing. Excellent. In the south, this is the land of The Timber Company that we purchased in 2001. So here in Alachua County. This is what we own right now. So what you're seeing in green, exactly what Commissioner Byerly said, that's the land that's in a conservation easement right now. About 24,000 acres total. It's bigger than Payne's Prairie. If you drink GRU water, there's some wellheads right there for GRU's water. We did take the development rights off of that land, and we're in partnership with a few folks on the development rights. We still own the land, and we still maintain it with forestry, but some of our partners, like the St. John's River Water Management District, and the Official Wildlife Commission, as well as Alachua County. Up here, it's both water management districts in the city of Gainesville. And then the rest of the land that you see in pink is zone rural agriculture. Oh, before I forget, the less, the more intensive forms of agriculture are also not allowed on that green land. So in other words, you couldn't have corn farming, because you're going to be obviously impacting the land quite a bit and doing some big irrigation. On the pink land, that zone's rural agriculture. And then rural agriculture means that you can have one residential unit on every five acre tract theoretically, with a well and a septic tank, as well as you can perform any form of agriculture that you would like to perform. Those are the rights that are given to the landowners in the comprehensive plan. So that actually represents about 65,000 acres. So here's some of the things. Where do we begin? So we began with purchasing the landholding from 2001. At the time, we had over 79,000 acres. We now have 65,000 acres. So we were selling some land. From 2004 to 2007, as Missy was saying, yes, they were updating the comp plan, and a regulatory overlay was put on some lands in the county, including some of Plum Creek's land. It's called the strategic ecosystem overlay. And we worked with the county to find out what that overlay did to us as a landholder. And at the time, the county asked us about 2004, through that process, what are your intentions for your land? In addition to that, they said they would like to see a development plan in order to be able to make sure that it would meet their policies. So that's where we stood. And then we also started to package some of our land and sell it at auction. And in 2005, the fight for flatwoods was something we were getting ready to sell to a Louisiana developer, and Alachua Conservation Trust came to us and said, would you work with us? And we actually did. Worked with Alachua Conservation Trust, sold the land to them, and we sold it, obviously, a lesser amount than we would have gotten if we had sold it to the New Orleans developer. One thing that you should think of mine, too, across the United States, Plum Creek is the largest landowner, conservation land in the United States, over one and a half million acres. We now own 65,000, and as we said, 24,000 is already in conservation, and 41,000 is zone rural agriculture, and of course, we have development rights on that. So this is some unique opportunity for our area. You only have to talk with one landowner as opposed to having to talk with many, many landowners and get them all to agree and get them all to into the room together. Alachua County has some unique environmental resources that are just worth protecting. US, one of the top research universities, public research universities in the United States. It's actually one of the economic drivers for the state of Florida. Right here in Alachua County, I think it's close to 90% of our economy is driven by the University of Florida. They actually would like to raise their preeminence. Santa Fe College is already ranked top 10. These are wonderful assets that we have, to have one of the top 10 community colleges right here in the United States, here in our county. We do need some jobs for all residences. As beautiful as it is to have US and Santa Fe, that's about 75,000 students that are here, and they, usually, are going to get a lot of the entry-level jobs. And so that's why you have what we have here in our community, a lot of working poor. They're having to work two and three jobs just to stay at poverty level. So we do need to have some more employment opportunities. And then Alachua County really has a ministry of innovative planning. They really do. Missy's a beautiful example of that. They've done some great things. And we wanted to, obviously, as a community, complete that vision of the Emerald Necklace. But there's a lack of funds, so this is an opportunity to even consider completing that and getting to our conservation goals a little bit quicker, again, at no taxpayer expense. So we formed Envision Alachua. About 2009, we started to talk to community members about, we think we would like to invite the community to a planning process. We did a national search. We found a firm that actually specialized in public discussions about land use, and we hired them, MIGD, Berkeley, California, and we developed Envision Alachua. We had a task force meeting, two community workshops, and some ed forums. What you're seeing at the top are the task force meetings. In Phase 1, we had six. We also had public tours. I think we've given, I don't know, close to 16 public tours over the last 13 years, I mean, the last three years. And some of the folks that have been out there, they will see that our land is not all west. In addition to that, there was our community workshops. What we ended up doing is we would actually break the community into small groups. We would hand out the draft of the vision documents that the task force was starting to put together, and we'd say, hey, what do you like? What don't you like? What are your concerns? What are the opportunities? What are you missing? Things along that lines. And that information got fed back up to the task force. So the first year, we said, we will put our land on the table, community. What do you want for a vision for your county that we can accommodate on our land? And so this is the vision document. It's really a beautiful document. It reads like a comprehensive plan. The community said they wanted three things. They wanted to make sure that there was something for the economy, something for the environment, and they wanted it to be done in an inclusive manner that the entire community could participate. So these are our Envision Alachua task force members. And you can see that it was a big cross-section, folks from the US, from Shans, from Santa Fe College, as well as folks local on the environmental side, the conservation side, as well as the business side, the people of Phase. We've gone ahead to make sure that we had some, a voice from each aspect of the community, including the hunter. I'd like to ask the task force members that happen to be here, if you're willing to stand, that would be awesome. Thank you. See, see, and I know Justin was here, so, thank you. They've really done a great job. Very diverse group. If you really think that we could go ahead and get that whole group to agree and come to consensus, that we had our own plan, just ready to screen out, go ahead and ask some of these folks. They'll let you know. I think that's been really great. In addition, these are some of the folks that were involved in Phase 1 and in Phase 2, and they represented it. I want you to know, too, that when Rick Drummond was helping us through Phase 1 and right before he retired, he did go back to the county and say, I think we need to add a sector plan as a planning tool to the county's toolbox, because what I've been hearing in the discussions, I think that's the likely outcome that they're going to want to use. So there we have what the community said they wanted. This gives you an idea. What they were awful hoping is that right now, this is everything that's happening out in the west. They wanted to see us connect on the east. There you have that strategic ecosystem overlay, remember? They wanted to see, give a plan, you know, for those lands so they could actually judge them all, make sure it looked good, make sure it met their policies. And then here's our land again. The community said, when you do look at it, they said this tract right here, it's about 16,000 acres. We call it the Windsor Tract. It's named after the community of Windsor, which I happen to love. That go ahead and take a look at this area, this area, this area, this area, this area for development. Doesn't mean that it's all going to be developed. We should just look at those areas first. So our vision goals, they said there's a goal there for economic development, environmental conservation, agriculture, water, energy and utilities, education, community planning, transportation, land use, healthcare, social and cultural development, recreation, governance. That was a great thing. They wanted to make sure that there was a way that this process is always going to be looked at and measured, performance measurement, and that it continues as we go through the whole planning process to remain transparent and allowing everybody to participate. So now we're into Phase 2. Remember, here's our land, our 65,000 acres. For the sector plan, we're only doing 60,136 acres. So that is the land that the county commission can vote on. So what you're seeing missing, you're seeing missing this tract here, which is in the city of Gainesville. You're seeing some little pieces right here that sit inside the city of Hawthorne. I'll hover back just so that you can see that. So this is the plan, the land that we are using for that plan, including the conservation lands. So we added Phase 2. In Phase 2, typically what ends up happening is you create a plan, and you create it with your team of consultants, or if you have a planning department, that's what you would do. You would go through the process, submit it to the county. The county would start to review it, and then they would say, each department, including the state, gosh, wish you had come to us earlier. We could have helped you create a better plan. So we added a technical advisory group. And the technical advisory group were representatives of all the reviewing agencies, both on the local level and the state level, not so they could advocate for the plan. It was so that they could have some meetings with us, so we could sit down and discuss, what are your issues? What are your concerns? What are the things we need to address in our application? And they were great. Five-hour meetings. I mean, these folks did a really great job. Four, five-hour meetings. We also had folks from the county were part of that, as well as the folks that we had liaisons from the task force, because they were keepers of the vision. That way, we could always make sure that wherever folks were giving us input, that it was always going back to what the community said they wanted of the vision. So the big thing about a sector plan is obviously conservation lands first. That's the big guarantee, enormous amount of land in conservation. So this is the Florida Wildlife Corridor. The reason why we like it, we own some land in Putnam County and also this Union Baker in Columbia County, where the Florida Wildlife Corridor actually crosses our land, which is a wonderful thing. And here's Alachua County. Down here, you're going to see what the priorities are in terms of what the state wants to spend money in order to buy it. The land in Alachua County is a lower priority, a priority three or four. So that means we're not going to see a lot of state money real soon. This is an opportunity to actually achieve that without, obviously, taxpayer expense. So the first thing we did is say, where are we going to locate those conservation lands? And here's the Ocala Forest, there's the Othiola. This is called the O-Trail, the Oba Corridor, I mean. That's the part of the wildlife corridor. So we were like, okay, how can we connect the existing public land, our existing conservation land, and then our other lands in order to be able to take a look at that? And so now you're looking at our plan. So we've added quite a bit of conservation, all of that, this right here, these pieces east, this piece here, and the section at the top there, and including to the buffer that's kind of over the Locklusa Corridor. And that is darkening all of the public lands, our existing conservation lands and the proposed conservation lands, to say we can create the Emerald Necklace. Again, no taxpayer expense. It helps our community get to the conservation goals a lot faster. So this is a map here just to show you where that is. So now you're seeing your existing land, the new conservation land, the proposed lands for development, the rural land, and some agriculture land. And yes, it does represent, when you add it up, it represents 87% of it in some form of conservation, agriculture, open space. 13% of that to be considered for employment-oriented mixed use. And oh, by the way, within that 13%, we've elected to set aside 33% in open space at the zoning level. A county comp plan would have only required us to set aside 20%. These are the land use categories. In a sector plan, you're only allowed to have four land use categories. All right? So you have conservation, agriculture, rural, and employment-oriented mixed use. Those are the activities that fall in those categories, and they all match up to what's in the vision document. In addition to that, we had to determine, that's what I, clicker challenge, we had to determine how much the employment-oriented mixed use area could actually accommodate. What can sit on that land? So at this point, what you're seeing is the map, the land use categories, those activities, and then we are obviously having the right policy to go along that to help guide that activity and how it's going to happen. We also had to determine at that point, again, what could sit on that land. And we looked at what David Denzil said. David Denzil said if he really wanted to help the community, he did some projections in terms of, Dr. David Denzil is one of the chief economists for the state of Florida. He worked at the University of Florida, the business, the Bureau of Business and Economic Research, BEBER. And so this gives you an idea of, people will sit there and say, well, how did you get to these numbers? Well, Dr. David Denzil helped us get to these numbers. So you've got, oops, there you go again, 14 million square feet of buildings that can accommodate research and development, office, institutional, and advanced manufacturing, not malls. And that can hold an estimated 24,000 to 36,000 jobs in the next 50 years. We can also accommodate 1.5 million square feet of retail services. We can also accommodate 10,500 units for residential. Okay? So a unit needs, it can be a single-family home, an apartment complex, it can be a hotel, it can be a dorm, so you can go home at night. This is another thing that we put on it, to make sure that this was obviously a job-oriented plan when it came to the development asset and not a residential-oriented plan. We said we will hold to the ratio of three jobs for residents. Now, that doesn't mean that a house is going to have three people in it and have a job. That means that we have to make sure that we have three people employed to every husband. That means that we have to make sure that we have three people employed to every house. And the reason for doing that is because each council and Hawthorne wants the infill to happen. And if we stood there with a catcher mitt, and we caught 36,000 jobs in terms of 36,000 houses, then we're not helping to encourage that infill. This gives you an idea just of what some of the things our folks were looking at. These are, obviously, the projected growth for the area. You're looking at the municipal boundaries, the urban reserve, and then in some of the areas, the extraterritorial. I always have to watch out, I would say extraterrestrial, so extraterritorial, okay? So, as you're looking at that, you see that some of the areas of Hawthorne are actually planned to grow into our land without conservation. And the same thing, this Waldo area goes into our tract, things along that line. Down here, it goes into our tract, all right? So, this just shows the municipal lines in the urban reserve area, but it also shows the rural clusters. So, near our land are Rochelle, Grove Park, Windsor, Campville, Orange Heights, you've got Locklusa Island Grove across creek. Those are zones at a higher density. So, if you live in there, you have, you're right to have one unit on every one acre, theoretically. But what ends up happening here is that if you own some land in this area, say 10 acres, and you only have a house in it, and you passed away, and none of your family member wanted your land, and that got sold, if a developer bought it, they actually could do one unit every one acre. I mean, they'd have to go through the whole process, but the rights are there. But what ends up happening is these fringe lands that are close to those higher-density lands, they can actually change from the lower density to the higher density a little easier. So, that's some of the risks. And so, that's one of the things that we were looking at. How can we avoid that and be able to make sure that we're setting aside, our goal is protecting those rural nature? The folks wanted to connect the University of Florida through East Gainesville out to Hawthorne. They call this the Economic Progress Florida, obviously, because the need for employment is greater on the east side. And just to give you an idea, too, we're going to actually, if we remove this point to right to the Five Points area, which is the intersection, it still means that your dollar distribution center is out 15 miles. This is going to be somewhere about seven miles, and this is going to be somewhere about a little more, about 12 miles away. So, the folks have said that if you lived here, it would be easier for you to get a job out here than really, it's not, in terms of transportation. So, some free catalytic efforts actually happened as a result of all of this, too. We launched on the environment side, and we did a comprehensive integrated water system strategy planning. So, that's, obviously, how do we plan for water in the future? And we had it reviewed by a water advisory panel. We also had the community and education area, that are our East County Educators Committee. They actually were talking about, "How do we align incoming job opportunities with our education system so folks can be prepared?" Hawthorne actually launched one. Some of the folks here, they launched their own committee. And as a result, Santa Fe is now offering classes out here. That's part of this effort. On the economy, we had the Economic Progress Initiative, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Oh, right here. So, one of the hard things would be is, obviously, just putting the land use in place, but really, we feel a responsibility to ensure that this actually happens going forward. So, Plum Creek is helping to fund the economic development plan for the entire county, so not just for our land. One of the things that we did, the first part is, is we paid for an update of all of the baseline data. So, what are we good at, what are we not good at, you know, what are our strengths, weaknesses, that sort of thing. We got unprecedented access into the University of Florida and the Santa Fe College. We did over 150 interviews with their administration, the top researchers, the dean, so we could map out who's doing what for research, where are you getting your funding, when do those things overlap, where do you see funding from a big corporation that is in both ISAS, in the engineering department, as well as in the biomedical department. Now, we're in the process of putting together a regional blueprint and marketing plan. And oh, by the way, we've already started the process of going out and talking with companies. I was in Baltimore, Washington, D.C. about a month ago, with the Chamber of Commerce, already starting to do that. So, we get back to where we're at here with our plan. Our economic opportunity, the long-term master plan, offers all of these things, the potential of 30,000 jobs in advanced manufacturing and agriculture. These are things that we don't have right now to the abundance that we need to have, assist in the increase of the tax base, allow for services and recreation, and enable the University of Florida in our area of Santa Fe to actually compete. On the environmental side, you're working with one landowner that actually has the patience and the time to be able to set aside as much land as we can, set a new precedent on how you want to convert rural lands that are on the edges, so that it doesn't convert to a higher density, so you can actually do some of that. And then, setting aside, again, folks are only, are going to be asked to set aside 20%, and we're going to be setting aside, now, tomorrow, when we submit, 33%. And we're also going to protect Locklusa Creek with a 2,000-foot-wide buffer. Now, when Commissioner Hutchinson was on the task force, this was something that he was actually negotiating before he stepped off when he got elected. And right now, we would have only been required to set any five-foot buffer, as well as its connected wetlands. And so, this is an opportunity to really set a new precedent. And on the conservation side, we're also taking a look at setting a new water ethic, because we think, "Why wait for the state and federal government to actually set the water ethic? We think we can do that here with a bunch of smart people in this county, and then actually model it, and then, at that point, be able to put it through." So, some things like, there's not going to be potable water, or drinking water, treated water, to use for landscape irrigation. Who are we playing water for that, in that matter? Sorry, go ahead. Next slide. Oh, education community, yep, thank you. Ensuring existing school benefits, so that's the other thing, too, that the plan says, that we're going to take care of the existing schools first. We want to protect the rural nature of this county. Windsor said it wanted to stay Windsor. That buffer of rural ag around that will actually keep Windsor from converting and growing larger and growing, you know, further into Hawthorne, or Hawthorne coming and growing up to them, encourage some of that infill. So, in Phase One, we, obviously, we had our community vision, we set aside the goals, the guiding principles, how the land activities and the policies to help that shape that. Phase Three, we're using the results to actually determine where the land use activities can happen, draft that plan, which we did, policies. Phase Three, we're going to use Phase Two results to actually determine the specifics of all of that, where those activities can happen, and that shapes the zoning. This just gives you an idea on some of the things that we're looking at. To orient you, okay, here's News Light, all right, here's Hawthorne, right here, 301, which is the main truck route from Jacksonville to Tampa, and this is the CSX main north-south freight line. This is a really old map, but one of the things we had to do as well is try to visualize our policies and the plan that we're doing, is it actually going to articulate. So, we were working with our task force members to come up with some scenarios, just so they could visually see how this is all working. The reason why I like this is this is an old map. We actually own this out parcel right here. During one of our technical advisory groups, the county and St. John's for the Water Management District, said, "We'd like for you to buy that, because we think that when you get to the zoning level, you may be able to do something where we might be able to set aside or connect some conservation lands." There's that pipe for Flatwater right here that we used to own, that we sold. So, this gives you an idea. This shows you, there's 301, there is 20. This is the advanced manufacturing area. There's some rail spur right there. This could be potentially where some residential would grow, so that that way, as Hawthorne becomes infill, then it starts to grow more naturally out this way, that it can actually grow in a meaningful way, and it doesn't grow in something that's not light kind. But when you get onto our land, you actually have to participate in some of the policies. So, for instance, you have to be within a half a mile walk of real transit. You have to be within a half a mile walk of the real job, not at the supermarket. You have to be within a quarter, quarter mile walk of a park, so you can go and recreate. In addition, in fact, you have to adhere to all of the water ethics. Now, let's go back to C, I mean, to A, here we go. The University of Florida was looking at this, not so they could own it, but to have it as a research campus. There's that piece of land that we bought. You can see how compact and all of that is. Folks, this gives us an opportunity, when we start talking about our program numbers, this shows you how those program numbers could actually fit in A and B. This does not mean this is the end, this is not how it's going to look. This is just trying to take the policies and the comprehensive, I mean, our plan, and being able to say, "This is what it could look like as we move on in the future." So, as Missy said, we submitted the plan on December 12, 2013. We've been working with the staff, it's been wonderful, going back and forth, they've asked their questions, we submit some answers. Then, they're going to start that review process, and obviously, there'll be public hearings, the state review, and then sometime in 2015, we hope that the county commission will vote to approve it. We do have a website, it's called envisionalachua.com. You will find every piece of material that we hand out on this website. We also videotape all of our task force meetings and our community workshops. We didn't videotape the technical advisory group meetings, because they were five hours long, and so that would have, those are some long meetings, but every piece of material from that, those meetings are on there. So, for the question and answer part, what I want to do is bring up the folks that have actually been working behind the scenes on the plan, because they're actually the ones that have answered those questions, which would be really great. So, we've got Tim Jackson that would be coming up, Greg Galpin, Brett Two-Fags, Linda Shelley, Dr. Dale Brill, I'll stand around and tape, and then we would like Missy to join us as well, so she could answer any county-related questions. So, we'll bring the mics up. And I think what we would like to do is have folks line up behind the mics. I'll let you hear, you come on up there, everyone, thank you.
Okay, all of our forums in place, we're going to kind of ask as a reminder that as you come forward, please present your questions very clearly, and also, as a reminder, we're asking that you're returning from some commentary, and that if you have a log comment, there are cards that you can place them on, but we would like to specifically, you know, direct this portion immediately to specific questions to the committee.
Mike, okay. Everyone can hear me, I won't be the first fool to get up here and ask a question. I understand what you're trying to do here, and of course, I'm loving the forest and everything, but I see the city of Gainesville and all the available properties from the sheriff's office out here, you know, the signs are just rotting and falling down, they've been for so, so long. We have a lot of commercial property, a lot of residential property in Hawthorne that can be developed and save our forests, because I particularly am not into using them quick. We've been there 4.6 billion years, if you convert that down to 46 years, we've been here for four hours, and our industrial revolution has happened in the last minute, and we've used 50% of our forests. So, I'm concerned about our forests. So, I'm wondering why we're not building those cities and improving those in the cities, and why we would want to, why we would want to actually develop a rural forest area that's been that way for, you know, a long time? And I can't understand it. So, if anybody could answer that for me on the precept there.
Sure, thank you. My name is Tim Jackson, I'm with, on Crete. The answer to that question is, it's not about, it's not about build new out here and don't build in the city. This plan looks at, let's do both of those things, because we think there are opportunities we can't capture on the land that's already urban, if not large enough tract of land that are adjacent to the railroad to put and attract larger voiders. That's the, that's the concept Dr. Denzil looked at, the opportunities, and said, "In fact, if we, the county, you, the county, decide on a different future than the trend of 1% for slow growth of jobs, and say, 'We want to actually attract more jobs here, a different kind than we attract by partnering with the University of Florida,' we could do that if we make large tracts of land available." So, that's what this, that's the concept behind this plan.
Can I ask another question? We have, don't look like before. Doug?
I have a question about the water usage and the conservation and the environment protection and all that sort of thing. And there was a, there's a lot of talk in Alachua County about springs protection and restoration and all that, and there was a spring bill that was proposed that was, well, it died, it was defeated, basically, and Plum Creek signed this letter in opposition to that bill. And I'm just curious about that. And, I mean, there's so many water issues, like, there's a study, Bulletin 69, that came out in 2007, there's a study in 2011, that shows how the freshwater land that we all take our water from is shrinking, and the old salty water is coming up, and I just don't know how you can justify your water request, potentially, and how can you, how can you even say all these things when you're not going to build anything anyway? It's just, it's very confusing.
Thank you, I need to clarify, Plum Creek did not sign that letter in opposition to the springs bill. What you have is a letter, what you have is a letter that was drafted by the attorney that put our name on there without consulting us or asking us, and the official, the official letter deletes, deletes our name and deletes one other party's that will put on that letter in error by the attorney. That's the truth, that just happens to be the truth.
What about, what about the other? I'm trying to figure out, I have to answer every question on.
In terms of water withdrawal, there's a couple, a couple ways to look at that. One is, Commissioner Barley showed the county, the big countywide map, and showed there aren't wetlands on the west side, there are wetlands on the east side, right? That's because the east, the west side, that is the recharge area for the aquifer. The water that falls there, as you said, goes into the ground, goes to the aquifer. The water that falls on the east side becomes surface water, it flows to the creeks, and it flows to the lakes. So, that's just one of the, that's the geology of the county. The, the water usage, the water usage question is, we have proposed that new jobs and new people are going to use water here, wherever they come, whoever comes here, they're going to use water. We're proposing, we're proposing as a part of this set of policies, is that, that we would, this new development would use, would put in place policies that use less than half of the average water use of other kinds of development here. So, it would, it would create an example of how we can all use less water for our daily use than we really need to. So, it says, "We will not use drinking water for irrigation in residential areas, for example." It says that the reused water, the reclaimed water, the first priority to use the water that comes out of the wastewater treatment plant, the first priority is to go into the natural systems, to make sure the creeks, the wetlands have enough water. And then, second, the water would be used for agriculture or for industry, so that those are, that's, the idea is that this creates a way that could all live differently. For example, it requires that all the landscaping be Florida-friendly, which needs a lot less water. So, that if all of us that already live here in the state were to practice just like that, our water usage in the whole state would actually go down, because we all use a lot less water. That's the goal here, to set this example, and the way to do it, or the only people who can do it, is somebody who has this many acres of land or who can do it, is somebody who has this many acres of land or should it.
If Plum Creek can bring this kind of commerce into our county and knock down our forests and mess with our environment, why can't our own county step up and do it for us without involving outsiders and the destruction of what we actually here were raised in, in these forests, and live with?
Well, let's, let's go to the, is Plum Creek going to create these jobs? And the answer is no, that's not. Right, we're not creating the jobs, Plum Creek, what?
So then why do we need you? You're not doing the work.
Right.
That are our future, why do we want you here, destroying our forests and then stepping it out for something else we don't?
Okay, let's, let's go back to the, to the, to the set of questions. One is, is the, the basis of making, of this plan is that we make a significant additional land available for economic development, for major jobs, in return for a significant additional land going into conservation. If you do those two things, that's what this plan does, and Dr. Denzilow's forecast is, this county could, could attract those new jobs here if the county chose to do that. That's it, let me answer the question, would you do, could I do that please? Thank you very much. So that it could. If the land isn't made available, it's not going to happen. So the Plum Creek is an, because we own 60,000 acres, we can, we can provide significant protection of natural resources in return for making that additional land available for economic opportunities. We can do that because we own 60,000 acres. Anybody else, if they only owned a few acres for the manufacturing site, the community wouldn't be able to get that land into conservation. So that's the role of some creek given us, was a whole, two years of listening, saying, what we think we need in our community is a place for these major new jobs, and we need land in conservation. As an owner of 60,000 acres, we have the ability to accommodate that, that part of the plan. So the other things we're doing to attract those jobs, number one, as Rose talked about, is we have funded and we are out there in the recruitment mode of major employer, working with the University of Florida, working with Santa Fe. So we're not, we're not sitting back and saying, approve this land and people are going to move here. We're actually out there doing, doing that initiative, that economic progress initiative with the community, and Dale Brill could talk about it at length, about exactly what we're doing there. The second part of that question, I think, was, so what's Plum Creek's role? We, our intention at Plum Creek is to be the master developer of this land. That means we intend to get, to have the commission hopefully approve the Commerce Plan Amendment. We intend to go get that land zoned, a piece at a time, a large piece at a time, probably, we talked about A, B, C, D, to do those one at a time, to get it zoned, to then go through a master plan for each of those specific areas, where we say, where are the roads? Where's the stormwater? Where does the mixed-use center go? Where does the commercial go? Where do the homes go? What sizes are they? And then to partner with a developer who builds vertical, that builds buildings, we don't build buildings. That's our intent. Now, there's nothing, I want to make sure, there's nothing in this plan that requires us to do that. When, if we, after this is approved or even before this is approved, we can sell this land to anyone else. The requirements of this plan go with the land. The requirements aren't on Plum Creek, the requirements go with the land. So if the commission approves this proposal, approves this consignment amendment, then those requirements stay with the land, it's not, not Plum Creek.
I'd kind of make one request, that we keep our, our questions directly to the committee, and keep our comments committed, but if we have comments, let your item there.
We're here for a real reason. We're here for town hall meetings.
The town hall meeting.
Matt, because I don't want to be rude, and I will respect the round a little bit. I thought it was more of a town hall forum, forum after, both sides would kind of have equal time. Will, will our side be allowed to answer questions?
Yeah, I was wondering why you weren't.
Because I'm hearing a lot of things that I think need a response. I'll respect the rules, but if you would just come in.
What we can do is, is Mr. Byerly, if you want to stand right here, and you can answer questions that are asked of you as well, and if we could have everybody that's planning on asking questions, because I've heard a lot of stuff as far as people thinking their house is going to be destroyed, there are going to be eminent domain, that, all kinds of stuff. So if you could, please come up here and answer those questions that you've had for the past few weeks on it, and ask the people that are up here, because this isn't the time to get answers now, all right? If you, if you wait longer, then it's going to be all room control anyways. So just please come up here and ask some questions.
Okay, I'd like to first say, just say on.
Okay, I'd like to first say, we are community first, okay? I don't care what color shirt you have on today, don't believe what they're selling you. If anybody wants to email me or Facebook me, my name is Tracy Maranoa, I have collected so much information about what they do in other states. They're coming into this little town, they're not going to build any of these world of dreams you guys are getting fed. They're going to turn around, they're going to rezone the land, sell it off, and they're going to destroy your swamps and your water.
My question is, for anybody that cares to answer, has any other area or group in this part of Alachua County come up with any plan to improve our economic situation or our educational system in this area?
And why?
Yes, and why?
Okay. And I'm sorry, because I was trying to get my microphone to work, so I didn't hear your whole question. Did you say it?
Yes, I want to know if any other parties or organizations have come up with any way to improve the economic situation and the educational situation for the people in this area of the county? Because we're underemployed, we're undereducated, we don't have the transportation facilities. We have none of the facilities in this part of the county that you can get on the other side of the county. We don't have access to many of the things that the other side of the county has, and it seems like when we're offered something, it's either a jail, or a landfill, or something like that. We've not been offered education and economic opportunities. And why?
Okay, that's a big question, I'll try to be succinct. I believe you're assuming in your question that Plum Creek is going to do those things, and I think that's what needs to be discussed, because it's not fair at all to myself and the community. And we kind of, I'm definitely not running the show, but I'm going to answer your question. And just in the interest of everyone, I know everyone's kind of tired of about this, but the less booing and hand clapping there is, the more people will feel open to express their views, and we can disagree, we can like civil meetings, so I hope we can do that. Your assumption is that Plum Creek is going to improve economic prosperity in eastern part of the county. I dispute that. I think what they do is they zone land, upzone it and sell it. It will be sold in pieces to different developers who may or may not do things, but there's nothing that could come or could happen now that isn't already in place. If an employer wants to come to Alachua County and do the things you're talking about, they can. There's not a lack of properly zoned land, there's not a lack of opportunity to do the things that they're promising to do. Now, I haven't heard anything about educational opportunities, I'm not sure what that refers to, I'm not sure how basically developing land and selling it is going to improve educational opportunities. But in my opinion, the jobs that are being promised here are jobs that could happen already, and are probably going to happen around the county and other places as well. You're right, some of this is where, that's an important question. Again, neither I nor my group oppose all that is being proposed adjacent to the city of Hawthorne, which is where the economic opportunity part of this seems to be. The part we object to and are concerned about is all of this area over here, which is primarily, I'm answering your question the best I can, you're asking about economic opportunity and educational access, and what I'm telling you is that the part that might offer that opportunity, we do not oppose. The part we oppose is the primarily suburban sprawling residential that will be on this larger area out here, which is not going to create the economic opportunity that you're talking about, it'll get built, probably like someone out of state, maybe someone local, but then they're gone, they're done and they're gone. So that kind of development is not going to help anyone, particularly in the long term, what we're going to be left with is a lot of problems that all the taxpayers are going to have to come up with. I'd like to very quickly respond to two points earlier, and then I'll turn the microphone over, I want to make sure that everyone understands, there's nothing in county law or code, and certainly state that wouldn't allow us, that can prohibit us from people planting grass in their yards and waters. A lot of what I've heard offers a very optimistic, shiny vision of things, and we're debating that vision, but to bring it back down to reality, we can't prohibit people from planting grass in the yard and watering. Possibly a homeowners association could be, but that would be a majority vote, a private matter, and not many homeowners associations are going to prohibit grass. Secondly, the statement that the rights and the restrictions go with the land is accurate but misleading, unless there's a permanent conservation easement on some part of it, anything that is approved at this first step or at the later step could be changed at any time in the future by any future county commission. If they want to spend the money, they come back to the county commission, they ask for changes to the plan. None of this is carved in stone. And if someone buys a 5,000 acre parcel of this 10, 15, 20 years from now and wants to do something different, they're going to come ask for changes, and on what basis is the county commission going to refuse them?
I'm always amazed at what I learn that we're doing that we're not doing, and folks talk about us. Just to answer the quick question that Ms. Worthy brought up, is anybody else funding economic opportunity in this county? And I'm going to say no. Plum Creek is funding the Economic Progress Plan for the entire county. There's been some initiatives that have happened through the Council of Economic Outreach, where there's been the consortium of members who pulled that together, and they've been able to fund some of the efforts, but not to the extent that we're funding it. Have they facilitated the conversations to bring folks together about what can we do to improve the education system in order to make sure that folks not only are aware of the jobs that are coming, that the education is aligned with it, and they're receiving the appropriate training? And the answer is no. Those are some of the things that we've been facilitating. We've been working through the Chamber of Commerce, and they've started their initiative called Innovation Gaze, which set the whole framework for it, and by the way, Pastor Adrian Taylor is here, he's the vice president of IG as well, and so he can let you know. The other thing I'd like to do is probably have Dale talk a little bit about it, because Dale, Dr. Dale Brill is obviously the former secretary of the Office of Tourism, Trade, and Economic Development. It's very few in the state that really understand economic development, and he could probably answer that question too. Has anybody really done something like this, where not only have they put a land use plan in place, but they're also making sure that it's being funded with the economic development side as well as the education side?
Thank you, Rose, and thank you all for letting somebody come in, come out of town and be part of the discussion. This is an honor to democracy, and it's just, it's neat to watch this happen. Obviously, I'm employed by Plum Creek and have some opinions of this from a state perspective. I'll have you all know that the eyes of the state are upon you, because fundamentally, the question you're wrestling with is, must we choose between the environment and job creation? I'm hoping that your answer will be no, that that's a false dichotomy, that's a false choice, that the green that sometimes represents the environment, the color green that represents money and profit, the question of where will education come from? Education costs money. The state of Florida has been pulling from various administrations the education budgets across the entire state. So this is a little experiment, and I bring a state perspective and will tell you that no, not only in the state of Florida is this not happening, this kind of commitment and this kind of discussion and possibility doesn't exist in the United States. You'll hear people talk about Silicon Valley, you'll hear people talk about Boston, you'll hear people talk about Austin, Texas. Couple reactions to that I want you to think about. If we all wanted to be like Austin, Texas, we'd move to Austin, Texas. And, and, but we can create jobs that are your flavor of jobs. To the question about economic development, another part where it's a false choice is that, that will they shell this off and look at what corporations do? Are there any sheep farm raisers, any cattle, that type of thing? The phrase that my dad always taught me is that you can shear a sheep a thousand times, you can only skin it once. And, and the, the business model that's built into this, and we're going to, we're going to talk about business, the business model that's built into this is how to maximize the benefit of all people in the exchange of what's happening here. The other, last thing I'll leave you with, and Rose will speak to the perspective, is again, it's about business, and you hear business people talking about, it's all about the bottom line. Business people are always associated about the bottom line, and again, that's the choice, that's a false choice. What if there were a triple bottom line? Think about it, a triple bottom line. That would be a fundamentally different thing, not only in the state of Florida, in the state of, in the entire country. And the triple bottom line is this, there's a bottom line that involves economic development, and will wealth be created for people who live in an area? There's a triple bottom line, the second bottom line is, will there be social equity? Will there be opportunity for people regardless of what color they chase or what color their skin is? And there's a third bottom line, which is, will we take care of our environment? And the, the new model of economic development that is before you is to reject the either-or and to find a way to do all three.
And that much land that's going to remain in conservation, we manage it with forestry, we're a forestry company, this is a marriage, we're going to be here for a while, this is our land, and I actually live here as well, thank you.
I want to try to get my three questions in before you try to answer that question. I didn't get any of that. You didn't answer their question. In Windsor, that's a nice community, small town, not even a gas station, that's why I live out there. You want to, I think that's wonderful that you want to develop Hawthorne, that's great, that's wonderful. I shop here and I come here at least once or twice a week. Why Windsor? Why 10,500 dwelling units around where I live in the country? That many people, eventually, 50-year plan, maybe my great-grandchildren. What's going to happen to my water? As he showed you, the blue, although, I'm not just talking to you, I'm talking to all of you. You start putting sidewalks and houses and all of that, what's that going to do to the aquifer? What's that going to do to my well? Is that going to flood my property once you start building on that?
I'll try to answer it in that order. The last question was, is that going to flood your property? The answer to that is no, there are rules and regulations that don't allow development on a piece of land to flow water off of it that in excess of what's already flowing off that prop, that land today, so the answer is no. So we're going to, so on, on this land, if it's developed, we will store the water on this land so that it doesn't flood any land off it. That's one of those questions that you asked. So the second question was about the land and so the wetlands. So let me just give some numbers. The 60,000 acres has about 30% wetlands. The map that the commissioner showed, our 60,000 acres, about 1 in 3 acres, about 30% are wetlands. The purple land, the potential, the land where we could potentially put development is, is right at 18% wetlands. So it has less wetland than the overall of the 60,000 acres. And it's that wetland, those wetlands plus the buffers around it, that we would work around to develop something. On the, on the land that's not already in conservation, so the 37,000 acres that we own, that doesn't have a conservation easement, there are about 12,000 acres of wetlands on there. We have looked at concepts on the purple to develop a job center, some manufacturing in Hawthorne, and associated residential around it. We've looked at some concepts and started to look at those, how much, how many acres of wetland might that actually involve building? So we've looked at, we've looked at a set of concepts, and we're, we've said, look, some of those are in the, you know, a dozen or so acres of wetland that gets built, others may be 2, 250 acres of wetland at the outset. may be 2, 250 acres of wetland at the upset limit. So that's kind of the range of discussion we've been having about potentially filling some of those wetlands. That's about 2% of all the wetlands that are in that 37,000 acres. That doesn't mean they're in the plan, it doesn't say this is, we're going to impact wetlands. What the plan says is, is we're asking the county to provide the flexibility for us to ask the commission in zoning to fill some wetlands because we think there's some potential positive benefits to that. That filling some of those wetlands lets us do a more compact job center so we get more density and we can preserve land other places. We could preserve more uplands outside those wetlands. So this plan asks for that flexibility to go to the commission and ask them for that permission of the detailed specific area plan of zoning. So that, trying to answer your question.
Thank you. I just want to quickly point out, everything that he says is true if we grant them all the development rights they're asking for. It might make sense if we grant them the areas that they want to have mixed use. There are certainly some benefits to clustering. Clustering is already required in many ways by the Alachua County Council of Plan, but I don't know how much more is being gained. The other part was about wetlands, and right out of my head, what else can I say?
Hi, my name's Sally Chisram. I have just a brief observation and then a question. Listening to the conversations tonight from the audience, it seems one of the major issues is that of trust and mistrust. And I wonder if anybody, since Mr. Byerly has pointed out that in that purple around Hawthorne, Plum Creek already has all the development rights it would need to bring economic opportunity, educational benefits, and other benefits to this community. So the question is, why would you not maybe consider starting with this area, showing what a great thing you can do, and then you have some data that says this is what we do, we can, this will drop these many jobs, we get it with this little impact, and then the trust would grow. But how do you see it growing, Dr. Thorpe? I don't think.
That's a good question. First, the land that we, the purple land up there, we don't have the right to develop as industrial today. It is rural agriculture, just like the rest of that land. So we don't have that ability now. Because your thought that start, start small and then grow is something, certainly something to think about as we get into discussions with the commission. The scale of conservation that can happen in return for urban development is where that would miss. The sector plan requires 15,000 acres minimum to do the sector plan. So that's the reason, the reason that the whole proposal is on the table is because we're trying to think really big about the environmental get, and think really big about the land use approval.
He's right. That part of it doesn't have development approval. My statement was that I personally, based upon what I have learned so far, is that there's a lot of merit to that piece of it. And the group stand by our plan, has taken the position that that is something the county commission should consider, that piece of it. Remember what I was going to say. I wanted to point out that the difference between the existing wetland protections in that county, that county comprehensive plan, and what Plum Creek is proposing, they want to basically set aside the county's wetland protections and replace them with the state-federal process. The county guidelines are a lot more stringent. Essentially, the state-federal guidelines do not recognize wetlands under a corridor acre. Is that correct? Looking at my growth management staff. You can bulldoze them, period, doesn't matter, they don't exist. I don't know if those are included in the calculations from Plum Creek. The 18% figure, I don't know if that included the buffers, but that's just the wetlands that do not include buffers. And that probably also don't include the land that's within the 100-year game of flood plan. Okay? When you start doing those things, that number is going to change. It's also important to understand, we won't really know the exact number until you get out there and walk the land. At this point, it's somewhat conceptual. All we really know is it's really, really wet. The other thing that the state-federal guidelines would allow is essentially for acres larger than a corridor acre, you can destroy them too, but you have to mitigate. And what that means, wet mitigation means, you can destroy this wetland, it's on you, potentially dig a hole that holds the same amount of water somewhere else. It works pretty well in terms of engineering the water flow. It works terribly if you're trying to recreate the biological and ecological functions of a wetland. We have a very poor track record in this state with reproducing those functions through wetland mitigation. We don't know what the final tally will be because the wetlands that will be asked to be set to destroy or changed comes at a later approval stage. It doesn't happen at this stage of the process. It happens after the county commission has already said, yes, you can develop. So again, the details we need to decide whether or not this is a good plan come later in the process. They don't come up at the beginning.
For Plum Creek, how will you control the flooding? That be retention ponds and canals? And in your conservation area, there's a lot of talk about conservation, do you clearcut that conservation land?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Scott. So the question was, there were two, two questions. One was, in, in the development area, how will we control flooding? And the second was, on the lands that are conservation easement areas, do we clearcut the forest? Those are the two questions, right? So I can handle the first question. The second, we have some people who know exactly what we do and our forestry practice and stuff. To, to address, okay, say, which one of those? Okay. In the, in the flooding, in the flooding, in development, to, to address flooding, we have a stormwater management system that holds water, that retains it, decanes it. It decanes it so that it keeps the same amount of water flowing off that land as was flowing off it before it was developed. It re, right? It retains it and it decanes, it does those two things. So it also, at that time, is treating the, whatever has gotten into it, if it came off of the roadway, it might have some, it has some minerals in it, or it came off of, as we do today, in areas where if you, if you put on fertilizer, you'd be treating out the phosphorus that came on. Right? So the way that you control the flooding is by stormwater system, it's not by ditching like agricultural activities. Anyone address the, on the conservation land, what are the forestry practices of cutting and how big a track did cut it during time, all those kinds of things? Is that what you're asking?
I did ask whether or not you clearcut.
Okay. Do we clearcut conservation land?
I'm Fred McTushak, the resource supervisor in charge of harvesting and marketing operations here in Gainesville. We do clearcut our conservation land, but those lands have been planted back and brought back into forest management.
Thank you. The question, I think it's important for everyone to understand what Plum Creek means when they say conservation. Most of them think about woods, they can ice stroll through the woods, there's wildlife all around. I'm not faulting them, this is just what they do. They're a timber company. They, they grow trees. It is intensive industrial agriculture essentially. They grow trees on a relatively short rotation. They till the ground, they clearcut rows of pine trees, relatively dense, they may do a thinning operation, but they grow pine trees. That's what they do. Biologically, it's more akin to a cornfield than it is to a conservation forest. Again, it's not a fault, it's just a fact. I think we need to be aware of that. When we're talking about 87% that you put into conservation, we're talking about 87% agriculture, not woodlands for people to enjoy. And secondly, about the stormwater part, we've been talking about wetlands being destroyed, but a very, very important part of this is the extent to which existing wetlands will be incorporated into the stormwater system. You're allowed to discharge waters and to contain the wetlands. It happens right now all the time. A pond, a creek, part of that runoff is going to happen in other areas, and it may not destroy them, but it will significantly alter the flow of water and how things happen in this town.
Can you hear me now? Okay, public speaking, you may want to throw up, so bear with me. I will only ask one question, but I'm just a little bit orientated. Can you scroll that up a little bit so we can see all those easement sector plan land legends on the right, all right? Please? Because, you know, I'm used to looking at the Alachua county maps, and these are Plum Creek.
The only one that's missing here is...
Promotional material.
This is agricultural, which is this plan here. That's all, all that's missing is that.
Oh, okay. Well, like I said, I'm accustomed to looking at the county map and the proposals that have been submitted. And what's in purple there, am I, if I'm correct, that that's been submitted as mixed use industrial? It's stated there in purple, which is very pretty, employment-oriented mixed use. But actually, isn't the proposal for mixed use industrial?
Let me quickly say something from the county's perspective, and then I'll turn over them for an answer. No, it's not industrial. Industrial, my understanding, is probably somewhere else primarily. Okay, I stand corrected. It is, there is an industrial out. The mixed use, many of the things that they're proposing to do in their areas are good, they're good planning concepts, a mix of uses, clustering in appropriate areas, transferring density away from more environmentally sensitive areas, those are all good things. At least the point is, these are things that are already required in our comprehensive plan. We're not gaining anything. They're good basic planning concepts. The Plum Creek would have to abide by if they were on the west side of the county trying to do something comparable, they would be required to do those things. So we're all in agreement. Clustering makes sense, mixed use makes good sense, those are good things. There's nothing new here, that's how we're going to look.
I'm not entirely sure who I'm talking to, so many people I'm never going to speak to, and I live here, I know that. Commissioner Byerly, Ms. Flagler. Sir, who are you?
I'm Linda Shelly.
Say it again?
I'm Linda Shelly.
Oh, I'm going to follow up and read everything. And you're Mr. Jack, and you...
I'm Linda Shelly.
Linda Shelly.
And I'm Fred McTushak.
Okay, great.
Dale Brill.
Yes, I'm Dale Gill. You live in town, haven't you? Okay. Why on earth would we trust, like these pages and pages of non-statistics and pretty color pieces of paper, when all you're going to do is sell the property to other people and see you later? Or fear is that this what you got here in purple, which you're submitting, that's the new proposal for mixed use industrial, that none of that is what you have any intention of doing? This, if that proposal is passed, you'll have the right to draw for oil and do whatever you damn well please. And that makes us mighty uncomfortable. Their train corridor right through 301, go through Plum Creek Land West, and ship our oil and gas right off someplace else. So we have great concerns about this.
We, we're, we're not going to drill for oil on this land.
Well, then why are you spending all your time doing nothing but trying to get oil and mineral and gas, right? I mean, that's Plum Creek's major thing these days.
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about, I really don't.
Anybody else want to talk about it? I'm not that quick. Okay.
Okay, with regard to the define, defining conservation, as Mr. Byerly pointed out, the approach to land use under conservation is short rotation plantation forestry, which is ecologically is de-paupret, as one could come across. Is there any possibility that Plum Creek would consider a major change in their approach to forestry that would be much closer to conservation? Because it is currently certified by the Sustainable Forest Initiative, which Forest Ethics calls a greenwash. It is not appreciated by the environmental community nationally, and it wouldn't be here locally. Might you consider a different approach to forestry that is really akin to conservation?
That's a good question. And we would consider that on some of these lands, a different way of managing those lands, of some of these lands, and look forward to conversation with the commissioners in the hearing process to talk about what are the concerns about those practices? The Sustainable Forestry Initiative is something that in, in all the parts of the country, if you're saying it's not respected here in Alachua County, it is a respected certification that exists. The lands that are in the county today that are under conservation easement are managed that way. And some of those lands, some of the Lakewa lands have special areas where they have different forestry practices that we use, we practice on those lands by virtue of those easements. And those are negotiated as a part of selling those easements. So that is something we would consider on some of these lands.
He asked a question about...
Okay, just quickly, the certification, I don't want to spend too much time on that, but there are two different kinds of certifying practices. One is potentially industry derived. Plum Creek was one of the corporate players that helped develop the FFI standards. Environmentalists are extremely skeptical about them. The FFC, or stewardship council, standards are not industry derived or funded, and they have a lot more, carry a lot more weight with environmental. I want to quickly point out one thing about this little corridor running up through the middle of it, where Plum Creek has promised to set aside a thousand feet under South Lake Lakewa's creek. They made a statement, I have to correct. And that is it said that the county only requires a 75-foot wide offer from its wetlands, therefore their thousand-foot offer would provide more protection to that corridor. Technically, that's true, but it misses the larger story, which is that this land is all strategic ecosystem. As I mentioned earlier, that means half of the lands of the uplands to their strategic ecosystem would have to be conservative. So under the county's comprehensive plan, that's the most environmentally sensitive part, assuming that it is near the creek. You're going to wind up with a much wider, wider border of water along that creek under the county's comprehensive plan than what was indicating that 75-foot wide offer.
We're about to run out of time, so I believe we're going to have to close the question. You've come before, right? We didn't let someone else, one other land has not been spoken yet. So we're going to end it with some last two because we're about out of time.
I would like to say, as a member of the task force, for three years, we're in our third year, I have served with some of the most responsible experts in the state of Florida on this task force. This has not been a settling job. This has been a job of us telling them what we would like to see as people to treasure our land. We've been in Windsor 50 years. I would not dare stand before anybody and give that away without knowing what their plan was. So I decided to join the plan and see if I could have a benefit of seeing how, how it was going to work, how it's going to serve us, and what we were going to, if Windsor was going to benefit or go down to you, probably. And let me tell you, if Windsor misses this opportunity, or if Hawthorne misses this opportunity, they'll never get anything else. Because as a, as a member of the Windsor community, we have never been offered anything that even comes near what this is, to offer us more than a landfill. And like our central position on the commission, I've seen you there for years, watched on television every week, or every few weeks, and it gets hilarious at the time. Sometimes it's better than watching Dynasty. But anyway, I want you to, I want you to answer a question for me. The conservation easement that will go out, what would it take for our three commissioners not to be able to change that once it's in place?
A conservation easement, as is commonly understood, is perpetual. Once it is in place, it runs with the land and can never be changed. That's why the...
Three commissioners, if you change commissioners, three commissioners, if you're not coming in, and throw that out.
Not the land, not the land that has an easement on it, unless all parties agree to change it. There's a process where they can do it.
Because whoever owns the conservation easement... So whoever holds the conservation easement will have the last say on whether it goes, whether it's opened up. I just want you to explain this to all these people, that they can't, the commission can't change, and they come in and change everything that we've put all of our time. And like I said...
I'll have to try. The part, the part that has a conservation easement on it, the way it's typically understood, it's possible, it's virtually impossible, once it's in place on the land, it's there forever, that is not all the land that we're talking about. That is only the parts that Plum Creek is considering to put into conservation, not any of the parts that they're proposing to develop in the context of mixed-use. When I say that can be changed on the vote of three county commissioners, that's the part I'm talking about. There is a process in place where they can come back and from the county commissioner request changes. It wouldn't be Plum Creek. It would be verified lands on them if they had a different plan than Plum Creek might have. It would be up to a future county commission. That is why it is so important to understand, if you care about the environment, what we mean by conservation. Again, if you're locking in place industrial forestry, it is highly debatable how much good that does the environment, how much good that does the wildlife. I welcome the suggestion from Plum Creek, if they're willing to talk about modifying their forestry practices, if they're willing to do that substantially, that changes the discussion. That is not the impression I've gotten from my discussions with them so far, and I would invite them to point out the areas that are proposed for conservation, that they're willing to consider having a discussion about substantially improving forestry practices. And if we can get the kind of deal where those practices really are beneficial to the environment and conservation easement can lock them in place, that changes the discussion. But that's not what's on the table right now.
Thank you, Sally Dickinson. I'm just trying, is it possible to put up that first map that you have, Commissioner Byerly? The water, it shows the water, standing water. I'm trying to understand how you can build an area that has that much water, and I think, although it would be nice to have an overlay, that some of the development is on areas that are very, very west, proposed for that. So what does that mean? What do you have to do to build on those areas? What would have to happen? Will you change the direction of water? Will you...
Okay. So first, what lands are we talking about in here? This is, the base map of this, Commissioner, is what's blue are wetlands and the FEMA floodplains. Is that...
Wetlands, buffers and FEMA floodplains.
Wetlands, buffers and FEMA floodplains. Right? These look, I will just say, this looks considerably different than the maps we have that are documented. But let's, just going on, we're talking about here, right? This is the land around Hawthorne. This is Area A. This is C, D, E. We're talking about these areas. That's Lakusa Creek and the connection from Lakusa Creek to Nunnans Lake Conservation Area. That's green in the proposal. So we're talking about these areas. Those areas are, they are right at, in the numbers we have, about 30% of that land, there's 11,300 acres, about 30% of that land is wetland and wetland buffers. That's about what that is, 30%. It's a little higher down here, about 41% down here. Up here is in the 20% area, so that's about what that is. So to develop on those lands, right, we're going to develop around, around as many of those wetlands as possible and not touch them. The plan that we have proposed says, let's look at one, look at rail spurges to this railroad track, and if we need to impact wetlands to get rail spurges to go there, we should be allowed to consider that, which is what's proposed to the commission. To put a mixed-use job center here, we might consider proposing some impact of wetland. I just talked about, perhaps it's a few dozen, perhaps it's a couple hundred acres in that area. But the other development happens around those, not in the wetlands themselves. Okay, that's...
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I guess that's pretty frightening to me. I had a sister who lives down in Bonita Springs, and when you see what's happened, GMC was a big company that came into Florida in the 50s, and Florida is such a transient state, there aren't a lot of people that have been around as long as, and many people haven't been around as long as I've been. The GMC Corporation came in and they created canals, they dredged and they moved around waterways, and they completely, I mean, they ignored the natural flow of water, which I assume goes into Lakusa Lake from this area. Once you do that, no matter how good you are at it, you've opened up the door for the water to really act differently, and certainly in Bonita Springs, it is, the water in these channels is full of toxic biomass, well, it's toxic bacteria, basically, and in the summertime, it's floating dead material. It's shocking. And this is, you know, right now Naples, which is one of the fanciest places in the United States. But it really worries me that we would consider building in wetlands and taking a chance with dredging and filling that we have learned from experience in Florida doesn't work in the long haul, and I believe you all are interested in the long haul, as everybody else is here too. Thank you very much.
Can I quickly say, I did not produce this map. Growth Management Staff at the county produced it. It's based upon water management district data that Plum Creek is required by laws to use in their application. Same data. I think, Ms. Dickinson, you're talking about General Development Corporation, who developed a lot of places, Port St. Louis, Port LaBelle, around the state of Florida, well before there were any environmental regulations. There was no requirement for water management at all. That's, those were the tragedies that we have now have a lot of regulations in place to address stormwater management and to address dredge and filling. Took a long time to get, thank you.
Hi, I just want to say thank you to Plum Creek for coming here. My name is Tawana Bristow, and I've lived here for 60 years, and my family, the Bristows, which are here, has been in Hawthorne for over 100 years. And my children and my grandchildren are in this community and will grow up here. And they go to school here and have graduated here, so has my family, grandfathers, and all the way back. And I'm not sure how many of some of the other people that are here and everything are from Hawthorne, have gone here to Hawthorne and grew up here, and taken concern of Hawthorne. Because our school, our community does need help, and I'm glad that y'all have taken notice of the area and are coming in and helping, because the county has not. For many years, our county, our Hawthorne, has gone downhill. Our kids have been dropping out of school from the high school. Our kids have been struggling over here at Shell. We have been making failing grades at the elementary school and at the high school. Do any of y'all know that? Are you concerned about it? Then why aren't y'all here making a difference with any of that? I'm talking still. And so, I'm still talking. So I'm glad that y'all are taking notice of it, and our kids don't have, as they're dropping out of school, they do not have jobs. They are trying to get to school or go to Gainesville to get jobs. And so I'm glad that y'all are taking notice of what's going on, that we need help here. And I, yeah, I do trust y'all. I'm taking trust in y'all of being able to come out and help, because our county has been helped. And so, as I said, I have been here for 60 years, and also my family has been here for over 100 years. And I don't know if there is anybody else that's been here that long or not. That's right, my brother-in-law. So anyhow, thank you, Plum Creek, for helping.
All right. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you sitting there.
Yeah, my legs.
Couldn't stand, no problem.
I've got a little problem, my legs, you know. And I don't know if I'm pro or con to this, but I see where y'all made a lot of questions, you answered a lot of the problems, but you're just not doing the problems. You know, now you're talking about how a lot of this land was tried. Two years ago, it was tried, because we've been in a drought for the last five years. So two years ago, you could have walked on any swamp out there, what I'd get your feet wet. Today, you can't do that. We need to protect that land, but we also need to develop. It's two-way thing. You can't set steel, and that's been part of the problem in this town, is a fault development. And I'm not saying that this is about to be fixed. I'm not going to sit here and say that these people are standing on, you know, the wall to... They're here for us. They're a real estate company in the timber business. They're in the timber business. And to me, if I got land and I want to develop it, I think I always have a right to develop it, but you got to have guidelines. Now, you say that, you know, we're going to zone this stuff and approve this, and then we're going to come back after that to decide about the water stuff. Well, why do we put in the horse or the trailer in front of the wagon, the horse? You know, let's get everything approved. Let's go back to the drawing board and let's get everything approved. They're not going to develop this land, they're going to sell the land. Now, as a group of people, would we rather deal with one group of people that own the land now, that are shooting for the right zoning? And I think we need to work on this zoning business, what we do on the environmental part of the whole thing. But, you know, we've got to protect the land, we've got to protect the people, we've got to buy jobs, and I'd a whole lot of rather deal with a group that has taken the time to come out and talk to us about it, try to work out and solve the problems. And let's get the problem solved, get the proper zoning. Now, we're going, we're going to put this into the conversation down here on the spot of what we've already done. That gives you the right, you still own the land, they need you to help them develop. I know how that works, they're trying to do the same thing with my piece of paper. And believe me, it ain't easy for you to deal with it. It's a 350-year plan. They call it a forever plan. 350 years is going to be a lot longer than any of us. That's for sure, most of our children's children's children, you know. But there's all kinds of different plans on there. So while I get this on and figure out what we're going to do, everybody's talking about the water runoff. Well, I'm going to stay on that land anyway. I mean, it runs off. Where does it go? It goes to the lower part of the land. But we're not talking about these people making these decisions. I mean, you've got St. John's Water Management, you've got Environmental Protection Agency, they won't protect it on every rainfall that gets in place. I know exactly what I'm talking about, I deal with the farmers, I'm on the Cowen Association, and we're dealing with this all the time, you know, with these agencies. But these people got to go by guidelines. It's up to the county commission, and, you know, if we don't do nothing else, it's too like the Cowen did, or with the state university, and all of these to come up with best managed practices. You have a best managed practice for forest, I know. We have a best managed practice for cow operations, for roe crop operations, they're the best managed practice. These were developed by one or two people, it was through the water management, EPA, university, and a lot of other organizations to set down and say, this is the way we think it needs to be done lately, and if you do it this way, then we'll try to keep the rest of people off your back.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
But you need to, as commissioners, you know, tighten this thing up on the zoning, and not worry about, you know, have, set it in concrete, you know, that they're going to develop this, this is the way it's going to be through the development, not, you know, 10 years, 20, 30 years down the line where it's going to be. And I know everybody, nobody wants to see 10,000 houses crossing their back doors, I don't either.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bristow.
All the way to there.
Thank you, Mr. Bristow. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out. Thanks, Commissioner Byerly for coming out, Stand Bar Plan people coming out, I support Plum Creek people coming out. Just to, just to give you an idea, before you head out, you know, I've only been, I've been here my whole life. I grew up here. I'm on the city commission. I've been on the city commission since 2009. I've just seen a document back in 1993 that Ms. Stallings pulled out from the old Chamber of Commerce that was addressed to Ms. Jane Segal at the time, who was the president. In 1993, the Alachua County Commission created a task force for eastern Alachua County development. I had to, whenever I seen that, I had to get taken back to just trying to think of what's happened on the eastern Alachua County since then. Now, this, this may not be the plan for everybody, this may not be the final plan in this stage. The important part is that all of us stay engaged in the process, that all of us go to these county commission meetings. To my knowledge, since I'm 30, almost 34 years old, to my knowledge, we've never had a town hall meeting like this, this big, this kind of turnout. And normally it's for something bad, like water rates going up or something like that. But this is for something like opportunity, or just sticking with what we got, one or the other. And so this is a chance for all of us to get our input, all of us to have our voices heard, and so, you know, you are to be committed to that, as well as, you know, whether you support Plum Creek or not, what landowner's going to come here and have discussion about what they do on their property. So to them, we have to thank them as well to at least have that stability to come here and ask us what we want them to do on their property as well, and to have the county engaged in it, as well as, I know the Chamber of Commerce from Gainesville, Mr. Adrian Tellier's here, and they've had a lot of input. So I thank you for that. I want to make one last plug for Hawthorne. This week is our 82nd, 82nd annual homecoming? 83rd. 83rd annual homecoming, and it's centered around this school here, Chester Shell Elementary, and we have Ms. Libby Hartwell, who's our principal out here, who's also a Hawthorne native, who's the principal of the elementary school and the high school. Things are getting turned around here. This school's doing a whole lot better. I heard our schools earlier. This school's getting a whole lot better. My kids go here. The high school is getting a whole lot better, it's turning around. We have Santa Fe College that's out there. So Hawthorne's getting better, and it's just a matter of us putting it together as citizens in and around that area to make it continue to get better. So today, this Thursday, at 1 o'clock, is opening ceremonies right here in this room, and they serve lunch, and we'll have better speakers than me, and then we'll also have gospel extravaganza on Friday night, correct? And then Saturday, there'll be a homecoming parade, and I'll actually be driving in it too, so if you have tomatoes or anything else you want to throw at, maybe that's fine too. Whatever you have, there you go, target practice. Just make sure you loosen your arm up so you don't get injured or anything. And I do see Commissioner Carlton back there, I just seen him. So thank him, he's, his family's been here a long time too. Matter of fact, there, we just, the city of Hawthorne just got 1,100 acres with the help of Putnam Land Conservancy, which is an environmental group, who is also, has been involved in this process, and a lot of their members support the process. But out here, the original settlement of Hawthorne, if you haven't been to it, it's a new 5,000 square foot building that was there in the original grist mill and everything. So come out there as we start getting that turned around and the original quarter, right here for Hawthorne. But once again, thank you, thanks Plum Creek, thanks Commissioner Byerly, and everybody else for coming out tonight, and y'all have a safe travel home, and thanks for your involvement.